Different, I'm not able to see the other side.
Tonight, and so first of all, I would like to recognize the Gladstone community for taking the interest in the time to watch us. I also want to thank our teachers and GTA leadership for being here. We also have the Clackamas ESD leadership is here and Jeremy Gingrich from Wilcox. Our Endondo is here and I, I hope we have our student representative here that will talk to us in a little while. Again, thank you all for being here. Speaking of which, the first thing on our agenda tonight is information from our student representative. Is she here?
She is, she should be on her way. It's sometimes these transitions take a moment.
Sure, thank you.
Hello.
Cassidy. So.
I'm Cassidy Krasinski, I'm a senior and I am student representative for tonight.
Thank you, Cassidy.
Yeah, um, so first and foremost, my name is Cassidy Krasinski, I use G her pronouns and I'm a senior at Gladstone High School. Just a little background of like me and my history at Gladstone, I've been a part of the band program for seven years. I'm a senior member of the drama department, I am the Gender and Sexuality Alliance President and our ASB Vice President. And have been in Gladstone School Districts since my sixth grade year, so it's kind of my history in Gladstone. As far as a general school recap, so far solid start to trimester two. Food and textbooks and supplies were all distributed last week. Really great start, sports and activities are finally going again, our winter play is being rehearsed. We have our culture issue through food class that just got started up again that we hadn't, we haven't done virtually yet, so this is new and exciting. National Honor Society induced thirty-three new members via a virtual ceremony last Thursday, that's super exciting. And Student Senate and our Student Advocates for Equity are currently coordinating a charity drive of some kind, Student Advocates for Equity are working on doing a supplies and donation fun, like fundraiser for our indigenous communities that were displaced because of the wildfires. And starting a connect project with the help of Emmett Pearson, trying to work on equity issues here in our Gladstone community, so that is super exciting. And yeah, that's kind of just the general Gladstone High School recap from me. Yeah.
Thank you.
Cassidy, what are your plans for next year?
Yeah, so I am neck deep in the college application process. Currently, right now, our top runner as far as schools go is Alberta's Magnus in New Haven. So I plan on being a psychology, a psychology major and going into something like genetic counseling or heading to be a kind of nutritionist or something like that, but that's kind of my goal for, for after high school.
Thank you, that sounds exciting.
Thank you.
Good for you, Cassidy, nice job.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thank you, Cassidy.
Thanks, Cassidy.
Yeah, you're, you're, I think it's the, you're invited to stay, but you're, you're welcome to leave.
Wonderful, um, I will actually head out of here, but thank you so much for your time and letting me come and talk at you for a second. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassidy, it's great to hear about the high school.
Again, thank you, Cassidy, our next item is discussion reports.
And I believe. Libya, can I, is it okay if I start this, Greg?
Oh, please.
So first of all, I want to introduce somebody, we have Rachel Lopez Hopper in, in the meeting tonight. So you have to wave now, Rachel, wave, wave long enough that everybody knows who you are. Rachel, we're really excited to have Rachel on board, she is our Director of Finance, she started on January fourth. She has many years of experience as a Director of Finance, most recently in Reynolds School District. And before that, on the very east side of Oregon, she grew up in Nisa and worked in Ontario for several years, so we're, we're really excited to have you aboard, Rachel. The nice thing about the audit report tonight is you could just get to sit and listen because you had no part in this. And we do have Jeremy Gingrich, who is our, our auditor. I don't remember how many years you've been the district auditor, Jeremy, but I would guess it's been eight or nine years that you, you've been our auditor, and so I'm going to turn it over to you. We do have board members that, we had an audit committee meeting on Monday night. And we do have board members that attended that audit committee meeting that you may want to add any comments, that was Greg, Stacy and Jeremy. And you may want to add a comment or two at the end, but Jeremy Gingrich, we're going to turn it over to you. So you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you very much, Bob, and thank you for allowing me a little time tonight at your board meeting to go over the results of the audit. And a hearty welcome to Rachel, I expect that we'll be chatting in more detail at some time in the near future. I think I'll dive right in, I, I forgot to ask ahead of time if you wanted the long version, the hour and a half? Or if I was limiting it to hour and fifteen minutes tonight? I do have a very shortened presentation, I can give, it depends on what your agenda looks like for the board meeting tonight, how long? Legitimately, how long would you like me to spend and I will, I will tailor the rest of my presentation accordingly.
Jeremy, I would tell you to spend the time that you think is important to spend.
Perfect.
The board does have a lot of business tonight, but do not let that hinder what you think is important to share with the board.
I will, I will get through the necessaries then, excellent. So to start off, I generally like to start with the financial statements themselves, and I'm going to share my screen so that you don't all have to be trying to look and follow along on your documents that you've received, so. Oh, I'm not going to do that because I don't have the capability to do that. Is that something that I can have the capability to do? Okay. Okay, thank you, Jeremiah. Now I need to determine which one I'm going to show you here, I think this is the right one. I hope you are all looking at a a letterhead and it should say Independent Auditors Report at the top right corner, is that what you're all saying, excellent, okay. So each year, the state of Oregon requires you to have an audit of the financial records of the school district. They require several different things to happen in that audit, one is an overall financial statement audit, and then they also have a have certain laws and regulations, test, that we test certain laws and regulations that those are being followed within the district. And so there's two reports in here, they're specifically related to Oregon in that they're the ones that have required those audits, there are two other reports that are included as part of your federal grant dollar audit that is required because you exceed the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold for expenditures of federal awards. You're subject to what's called a single audit, so there will be several reports in the, that we will go over a little bit later that have to do with those federal dollars. General, the general audit overview, we spend a little bit of time in the summer getting to re-know you each year. From there, we go back to our offices and put our heads together and develop an audit plan based on what we learned about any changes you might have had within the district over the prior year, and then look at the various risk areas within the district and target our audit to those higher risk areas. That, that gets done mid, mid to late summer and then we show up and start our audit work sometime in audit, October or November each year and come out and do what's considerably, traditionally considered audit work where we pour through the documents and so forth, and this year was a little bit unique, as I'm sure you can imagine, in that we did all of that electronically and remote, via remote sources, so. Few additional challenges this year, I am happy to say that Tracy and Samantha were very helpful in facilitating that. Natalie got involved in the process and sent us some documents too, so I do appreciate the help that the district office staff provided in helping us get through this process. Any questions about the audit process itself? I don't see any, so I'm going to move right on and we'll talk about the Independent Auditors Report. As I said, this is the overall audit of, report for the financial statements as a whole. I think most people consider this to be the most important audit report, I don't know if that's necessarily true or not, but it's the one everyone focuses on. And so on our second page, the first page kind of talks about what we, what we audited and the various responsibilities, what the school has responsibility for and what our responsibility is, and then we offer our opinion at the top of page two. You have received what's called an unmodified opinion, that is a fancy way of saying, job well done, we didn't have to amend our report or modify it in any way to tell you about anything that we came across during our audit procedures. In school district terms, that's a grade A, so good job. Other few other items here, just referring to the various types of information that are in the financial statement document. I'm going to, I'm going to take a very quick approach through the financial statements themselves, since we spent about an hour and a half with the Audit Committee. I'm really just going to point out what is there, I'm not going to cover any numbers, and then if there is any questions or one of the Audit Committee members thinks that I should go back and cover anything, please let me know at the end of that, but I'm going to really quickly just go through kind of the flow of the document so that you know what is there and end that part of the presentation with the other audit reports. In the, it's page fifteen of the PDF and page six of the numbered pages is the beginning of the Management's Discussion and Analysis, so this is what Bob and Samantha put together every year. If you don't look at anything else, I always say, look at this, because for two reasons, one is the information that they either are required to tell you or they want to tell you. It has future, and it has future looking information at the end of it. And two, it's the only place in this document you will see comparative information between one year and another. So Management's Discussion Analysis, page six. I just realized, can you guys all read this, or is it at least legible enough to see what, what I'm talking about? I'm not seeing anybody shake their heads no, so I will continue on. The financial statements themselves start on page twenty-nine of PDF or page twenty of the numbered pages with the Statement of Net Position and the Statement of Activities, these are the government-wide business-type statements that include your assets and liabilities and so forth. As a commercial-type business would, your fund financials start on page twenty-four, this is the normal information, it, the basis is the same as you receive on your regular monthly board meetings. Moving right along, after those come the notes to the financial statements, starting on page thirty, excuse me, page forty-three or thirty-four of the numbered pages, he's gone for a long, long time, provide detailed information about the other items that were presented in the front of the financial statements, I will call attention, some people like to take a look at maybe kind of the breakdown of the capital assets, that's on page forty-two numbered page or fifty-one of the PDF, and there is a debt, some debt schedules that are also useful, you can look at starting on page forty-four or fifty-three of the PDF. After that is some required supplementary information and some budget-to-actual schedules that you will find towards the back of the document, I'm flipping through these very quickly to get to information that's required by ODE to be included in here, that's Oregon Department of Education. And then we get to our single audit, and this is where we look specifically at the federal grants that the district has received, it's a a way of monitoring for the federal government that those funds are being spent following the procedures that are required by those grants. This first report is what's called a Yellow Book Report, we don't, it's not an opinion-type report. Just tells you that we look at internal control both over financial reporting, that's what this report is about. And then over compliance in the next report, so this is a way to talk about that internal control or financial reporting that we looked at. We do not offer an opinion on that because we're not being asked to audit it. But we do have to consider it in our planning of the audit and in the procedures we perform when we're testing your federal grants, and so if we were to find something significant significant enough lack of control, we would use this report as a place to report either a significant deficiency or a material weakness in internal control, I'm happy to say you had neither of those. Then we move on to the single audit report, this one does have an opinion with it, it is an opinion over those federal grant dollars. And again, an unmodified or clean opinion, grade A if you will, on those. And you've got the actual schedule of the federal awards that were reported to the to, included in your financial statements, you had about one point two million, little over one point two million dollars in federal awards last year. And then the last document or last report is the report that's issued to Oregon based on Oregon State laws and regulations, again, a clean opinion on this. We are specifically required by the state to look at the items that have the bullet points here in the middle. And again, as I said, no findings there, that's about as fast as I can get through the financial statements. So if there, if I glossed over anything that, especially those of you who were in the Audit Committee would like to be aware of or like me to mention, please let me know.
Hey, just a quick question, Jeremy, and I apologize, my webcam is not working, or I'd be raising my hand. On the, on page forty-four, could you speak a little bit to the difference of a little over three million for the pension obligation bonds? And I realize there's an ex, there's an explanation on forty, page forty-three, but maybe you can break it down into layman's terms.
So the pension bonds are, they were issued back in, let's say here, April of two thousand and three. These were, this was a bond that was issued to basically prepay some of the increasing pension liability related to PERS, and so at that time, there was, there wasn't some of the reporting that we do now in the financial statements, and there was this kind of ethereal, bad, negative number kind of floating around out there, we all knew it was going to be hard for districts and other municipal organizations to meet their federal, excuse me, their PERS obligations going forward, and so at that time, there was an opportunity to issue bonds, Gladstone, by extreme Bob's extreme knowledge and wisdom was able to test that the right month for many, many years, you were overpaid and your pension rates were negative at Gladstone as a result of that. Not true for many other districts that happened to do it even in the same year, but at any rate that's, that's the underlying theme behind that, so those were prepaid, they have continued to decrease the rate you pay on an annual day, well, monthly basis really, to PERS. Does that, does that address what you were asking, Eric?
Yeah, sure does, thank you very much.
Absolutely, and that's a great question, anybody else have a question? Okay, I think I'm going to move on to the Board Report then, and I'm going to have to stop sharing and switch to that screen, so give me one moment to do that. If I can find it. Okay, I hope, no, that's the same one we were just looking at, I apologize, we'll try one more time here. That looks like it's going to be the right one. Okay, each year we're required to tell you, the board about certain things that happen during our audit, these, much of what's in this report is boilerplate language, meaning we have to tell it to you and basically any other auditor has to tell it to any other client. So what we look at here again is things that have been modified, and the vast majority of the things in here have been unmodified. Meaning there's nothing of significance to really go over. So I am going to skip right to the, the heart of it, and that is, we're going to make, we have one recommendation we're going to make to the board this year, and then actually one that is not in this document that we talked with about at the Audit Committee briefly. Not super significant in terms of, they're, they're not negative things. This is a proactive board beware, you're in, we're, we're still in this COVID crisis, all of us together, and the remote working or the coming back and that, those transitions that are happening and the uncertainty surrounding all of that does provide opportunities for mistakes to chinks in internal control, basically, we believe the district, in fact, we feel really fortunate, we believe all of our districts that we audit did a great job in the transition, overall, internal controls didn't really change that much. It, in, in form, they changed, let's see, in principle, they changed very little, in form, they changed from electronic from, from physical to electronic in many cases. But we just want you to be aware that there is that opportunity, and what we're saying to boards is check in with your business manager and your superintendent. See if they're, you know, aware of any changes, it's, it's a question kind of a thing. Really, you reminding them, hey, these changes are going on, don't get too caught up in it that you're forgetting to look at the big picture. Like I said, we don't think there's anything to be concerned about necessarily, based on our testing, it's just an overall, be aware of this. Because there, there is opportunities for fraud as well as simple mistakes to just not get caught in a timely manner, so. That's item one, the other item is, we talked briefly, you, you've had a transition, significant transition in management, and we're all excited to have Rachel on board and learn to work with her. We want, I, we talked about, and we have talked about over the years with, in the, in the Audit Committee specifically about personnel and it used to be a, we're really worried about all the retired people that are continuing to work and the fact that if they would all leave at once you could be in a real pickle, to now, the overall employment scenario is changing. I, I am super excited about Rachel and I feel very, very fortunate the district was able to find her because up until recently, and I'm not, this is the one, this seems to be the turning point, Rachel, you, you are hopefully the crest of a new wave of goodness coming to us, but hiring people of adequate capabilities has been very, very difficult in the last two to three years, and so what we, what, what we talked about in the Audit Committee meeting and what I think I would like to just make the greater board aware of is Rachel's going to come in with her own skills and expertises. Chances are there for additional staff or anything like that. But school districts by nature want to run as lean as possible in the business office. And for years and years, that has been generally allowed, I mean, to people, there, you could find people of you know, capability and quality that could, that could allow that to happen, that lean operating. Rachel may find down the road that, you know, she needs to make changes in staffing, and I don't want to have her come up against a board that says, well, you know, it was always done this way. Be aware that if there, she has changes in her staff there, if, we might not get so lucky in being able to replace somebody like Tracy with another Tracy, it might be that you have to, you know, find two people to do that job or get a little creative. It's just something to be aware of, the employment market, especially in the accounting world, is extremely difficult right now, and so just if things come up over the course of the next year, be a little bit conscious of that, I think. Did I summarize our conversation right, Greg?
Yeah, thank you, you did.
That's all I have, I mean, that's, that's what I needed to say, so I can move on and let you guys get on with the rest of your business or continue to answer questions as you like.
Board, I, I asked most of my questions as part of the Audit Committee, and any questions from anyone else?
I would just affirm that the, there's layers to this process, lots of looking in, lots of transparency, lots of of opportunities for, for looking in on it, and so as part of that committee, I would just relay with confidence what the findings are here and appreciate Jeremy and your, your firm's work on it.
Well, again, we appreciate our ongoing relationship and Gladstone has always had a very capable and thoughtful staff and we're thankful to be able to work with you. And I feel like unless there is any questions, I really should cut my comments short because Jada is going to be extremely upset with me for taking up so much time.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you all, I hope to see you again soon in a different, more in-person setting. Bye now.
Next, we have yeah, Jada with Clackamas ESD and their Local Service Plan.
Yeah, just, maybe I'll just start out just a little bit, Greg, so this is an annual that the ESD needs to receive affirmatives from all of the school districts within their area. I can tell you, I don't believe our ESD has ever been stronger in Clackamas County. I, I think the exceptional leadership, and, and I'll tell you, they have an exceptional board because, because at least three of them were in this meeting, maybe four. And, but, no, we are very thankful to have the folks we work with and there's more collaboration going on now between school districts and all different kinds of job functions that are district-level job functions than we've ever had, and that's very, very helpful. And you may, you may see one name of note on your screen, Wade Byers, former mayor of Gladstone is on the ESD Board, so Jada, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Bob Stewart, and Chair Lynn, thank you for having us this evening, as you heard from Superintendent Stewart. This is an annual event that we get to come out and visit you. I will tell you that as I introduce our board members, this is a commitment that they make, that many of the other ESDs around the state do not, that they once a year, want to make sure that they visit with each of you as board members. We have our Annual Service Plan tonight that we are going to present to you and we hope for approval, and I have a couple changes and this is probably one of those odd times to do this, I am hoping that you got your print copies in the mail from us so that you Nice, I like that, so that I will be able to reference some pages for you. This year, we added a special component to it where you have your very own Gladstone insert that talks about the various things that we do. Before I get to the Local Service Plan, I would like to start with a couple sincere thank yous, and I would like to start with your superintendent. I am smiling because of the meeting that his relationships and his work just put together at five-thirty tonight. We were able to meet with the Chief Operating Officers of all of the healthcare systems in our region, and I believe that we're going to have an amazing result for our teachers, our staff, and it's just, I'm, I'm excited, I can hardly wait, so thank you, Bob, for those relationships and that work that you do. I'd also like to look at pages ten and eleven in our Local Service Plan because what I'd also like to call out is that several of your own Gladstone professionals meet regularly with their regional colleagues, we facilitate that as the ESD, but their commitment has been incredible to collaborative effort, if you look, you would see Samantha's name and Rachel. If you look, you would see Samantha's name and Rachel. You'll soon become part of that group as we welcome you in. Leslie, Jeremiah, Tammy, Kelly and Ryan Johnson all have been actively involved. And I will say this, Tammy, you've put in more time than anybody on some of the weekly calls that you get to spend time with, as well as you, Jeremiah. So thank you to all of you board members. This is Board Appreciation Month. Now more than ever, your leadership is so important to the kids and families of Gladstone, but also all across Oregon as we deal with the many challenges that we face on an hourly basis. I used to say daily basis, now I say hourly basis because things change. I'd also like to extend an invitation for a member of any of the board members who might want to join us. Every year in May, we have a budget committee. The board members from several districts meet together and help the ESD board approve their budget. And a few notes, this is a year-long process for us. So you hear that we complete the process with the budget in May. But all fall, the advisories have been spending time working together to say, what is it they want to receive from their services from their ESD? It covers all the services that are provided. And we have done something different. If you look, you'll see on the front, you'll see a financial situation in terms of where your Gladstone dollars are going in terms of technology, teaching and learning. You do receive revenue back from the ESD that comes back through the tax collections that we return to the districts as well as special education. So those are things and those are services that have been decided upon with your advisories for the year. And then in November and December, those are reported out to the superintendent groups. So they spend time listening to each of the advisory groups and to hear the plans that are moving forward, the concerns that they have from the past year. And then in December, the superintendents have approved the local service plan. That very same evening, the board from the ESD also approved that. So as you look at this, it reflects a comprehensive preview of Gladstone. Laurel, if you'll go to the next page, what you'll see are the key services that have been provided to the Gladstone School District. So up at the top, we have talked about that. This year, more than ever, technology has played an important part. Our technology and our instructional have put together training for Google classrooms. We put together help desks for parents. We put together website tours, English and Spanish videos for parents as they tried to navigate as they became their child's teacher at home. We also, if you look down on the blue side, you'll see the very first on the left are the core services. So they are special education, the LEAP program, technology, teaching and learning. And then there are a few administrative services that we do on your behalf at your request. In the middle of the dark blue, what you'll see are contracted services. So we do your early learning evaluations for birth to five. We also have a student information program that is synergy for all the student information that comes regionally wide. And then finally, Heron Creek Therapeutic Program is a cost that addresses some of those most challenging students that need multiple assistance through behavior and mental health. So, and then finally, on the end, one of the things that we do on your behalf for districts is we work hard competitively to be able to leverage additional grants and services. Early learning is one of those competitive grants that we are due for both the early childhood special ed as well as some of your birth to three services for those infants and families that are experiencing challenges. And finally, we also have a migrant program, career and technical, and also a workforce innovation program. The workforce innovation serve those students 16 to 23 that have been dropping, that have dropped out from the Gladstone School District and other school districts. So it's their opportunity to be able to get a GED as well as workforce training through the Department of Labor Grant. So those are specific services that we have been able to put together on behalf of all of our districts. I also want to say new this year is that we are addressing student success as you. Some of the most exciting legislation happened in the state of Oregon for students. What that meant for the ESD is we received a technical assistance grant. And if you look on page 16 and 17, you will see the various services that we have put together to be able to work in student success. Knowing that you hear this from your students' families as well as what we hear from individual districts, we have put in school health as well as mental health services. Our staff don't work directly with your families, but what we're designing to do is to work with your staff. So our mental health person has worked with school counselors to be able to be sure that they are engaging students as they need to do. The school health person will become instrumental as we look at vaccinations for our region as well. So with that, we also want to talk about the fact that you have vibrant partnerships. Thank you for being so insightful to be able to look at the Gladstone Center for Children and Families. We're a part of that as well. So with that, I would love to ask for any questions that you might have. And if not, then we would let you get on with your meeting.
But Jada, I'm sure that there's several of them that want to ask this question. I'll ask for them. How do they sign up to be on your Budget Committee?
Aha, any connection with Laurel or me? It is May 26th is the date. And I will say this, it's a one-time shot. So we have 500 programs that we go through in an evening. Tim Witcher, who sits on your Audit Committee as well as has done some help in your district, considers it the most riveting evening that you would ever spend. I can't say that with a straight face. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jada.
Or member Byers, do you have any comments you want to make?
No, I just, it's appreciation. I appreciate being able to come to your meeting. As you know, Bob, my dad served on this school board over 60 years ago. So, and I went to Gladstone Grade School when Mr. Kraxberger was the principal.
And we called it. Thanks for continuing, sir.
Appreciate.
Lynn and John, nice to see you guys here tonight, too.
Any questions from the Gladstone Board? Thank you so much and we hope that you will approve this plan tonight as you do your board's business.
You can see that it's our first item under action items if you want to stick around top.
We will stick around to listen to that. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good job.
Greg, I don't believe, is Kelly in, in the meeting, Jeremiah? No, Kelly had some issues at her home last night with the wind and the rain. And she has been managing that all day. And so she asked if we could push that off for a month. And there's, there's no real obligation that it needs to be done now. We can wait another month.
Okay, thank you. Item D is Gladstone Teachers Association comments regarding transition reopening.
And excuse me, Greg, I'll, I'll transition them over just now. So Kevin and Chris, I'll be switching over. It does take a few seconds.
Okay, thanks, Jeremiah. Good to see everybody. Thank you. And I'm Chris Schubert and Kevin Zerzan and I teach at Gladstone High School and we are co-presidents of the Gladstone Teachers Association. Two years ago, Kevin and I came to a board meeting to encourage members to support the bill that would become the Student Success Act. Then as now, we were accompanied by many teachers who make up the Gladstone Teachers Association. Here is some of what I said at that meeting. I'm so proud to work with teachers who come to school early, stay late and work so hard to teach students and build community in Gladstone schools.
Hi, I'm Kevin Zerzan and I'm a science and engineering teacher at the high school. And I am co-president with Chris Schubert. Today, it feels as though everything in the world has changed and we have mourned the loss of the optimism that built the SSA. Most importantly, we honor and pause to remember the losses of everyone in our community during the COVID pandemic.
But even though it feels as if everything has changed and that we have lost so much, some of the most important aspects of our lives have not changed. I am still honored to work and serve with teachers who start early, work late and have worked so hard to build a learning environment for Gladstone students that did not even exist five months ago. I am proud of our students as well as they have adapted to learn and grow in the CDL and PLP programs. I am amazed by the strength and resilience of both teachers and students.
I too am proud of the education my very own children have received and are currently receiving in the Gladstone School District. Tonight, virtually, we return to you to speak in support of the safety of teachers and students. The Gladstone Teachers Association is more united than ever with a large number of our members in attendance at tonight's board meeting. If we were able to meet in person, this room would be overflowing with teachers and specialists dressed in red to once again show their support and unity. The vast majority of our members are in support of the resolution we are about to read. We ask that you, the Gladstone School Board, stand with us as we make the following resolution.
Be it resolved, on December 23rd, Governor Brown changed the metrics that have served as the cue for when schools may safely reopen from mandatory to advisory. We, the Gladstone Teachers Association, want nothing more than to be back in person with our students. We know that schools function best when educators and students are together. We also know it is not yet safe for students or staff to return. Vaccines are being distributed and given to those who deserve it most. First responders, healthcare workers and those who live and work in nursing homes. School employees will be up next for vaccination.
After months of tireless work to create and successfully implement comprehensive distance learning and with administration of the vaccine only weeks away, now is not the time to return to in-person instruction. We call on the Gladstone School Board to keep students, families and employees safe by continuing comprehensive distance learning until a vaccine is available to be administered to each school employee. We also call on the Gladstone School Board to work with the local health authority to provide vaccination clinics for staff onsite within the district. Until all school staff who are able to be vaccinated have access to the vaccine and we have completed our bargaining for the safety of all involved, we do not support returning to in-person instruction.
Thank you for granting us the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you both.
Thank you both, Chris and Kevin. Very well said. At this time, Jeremiah's got a couple of comments he wants to make about reopening. And then I have several comments to make about reopening that, that I'll walk through. So Jeremiah?
Sorry, playing DJ at the same time. Well, I'll keep mine relatively brief because I think, I think folks want to hear from the superintendent in a case like this. Just want to share a couple of key developments recently achieved. We have, right, right before the break, we submitted to County Health and to the Department of Education an operational blueprint for the opening of an assessment center. So specifically around the opening of an assessment center for looking at eligibility for students who might be eligible for special education. Over the break, we, we got a response back from Clackamas County Health with 17 helpful additions, which we implemented and wove into the operational blueprint. That operational blueprint is now live on our website and available for the public and all staff to see. The assessment center will be placed at the Gladstone Center for Children and Families in a, what was formerly a kindergarten classroom. And it will allow us to perform all kinds of assessments, moving past special education, even for, for, for example, a student who is nominated for talented and gifted can be assessed in that environment. So that's, that's an exciting development. We've been waiting for that. And it was helpful to get the, the folks from County Health to weigh in so specifically on our plan. And we look forward to, that will definitely inform the way that we, that we shape up those, those plans in collaboration with our employee groups down the river here. The other big development I'd like to share about was a very successful operation. We did employee-led walkthroughs of two of our schools, both of our elementary-serving schools. So we had membership from GTA as well as OSEA. And Director Moncrief was able to join us as well. That was great. And, and building leaders. So we walked through both John Wetton and the center from an employee's perspective, taking notes. And we asked those employee groups to provide written summaries at the end of those, at the end of those tours so that we can respond effectively to the concerns of our, of our staff who are going to be, when we reopen, who will be occupying those spaces. So critical that we do that. Otherwise, as Superintendent Stewart has spoken about in his most recent communications, significant air balancing and HVAC testing of all of our schools is underway. We've moved past the elementary schools and currently the, that airflow testing is going on at the high school. Bob, I think that's, that's my report for tonight.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Is my screen shareable yet?
Yes.
So I want to make some comments about where we are with reopening, a little bit of a history so that you all know what's transpired over the last several months. You know, it seems like, when you're sitting in my shoes, this seems like it's gone on forever. But really, it's only 10 months. And so let me just share a few things. If I can get my screen to move forward. There we go. So kind of a history of COVID in Oregon. So the first case of COVID, you may remember, was in Lake Oswego, a custodian of a school that was diagnosed on February 28th, 2020. The second case was on March 1st, 2020. On March 7th, there were four cases identified. And on March 8th, eight cases identified. On my, March 14th, the first death in Oregon occurred due to COVID complications. Now we roll forward 10 months. And you can see on January 12th, yesterday, there were 1,203 cases in Oregon and 54 deaths. Today, 1,346 cases and 41 deaths. During this time, we received a lot of guidance that was very helpful for the Department of Education and the governor issued numerous executive orders over time to deal with not only COVID and, and the pandemic, but also the wildfires. And so. And so kind of a recap, the one that most people point to as the most significant executive order was the one numbered 20-8. And that was the one that required us to provide supplemental instruction, not in person. It wasn't called distance learning because at that time, we didn't even know what that really meant. We were out of school, you may remember, for the week before spring break. Spring break and we were, the plan at that time was that we'd be back in school on April 1st and ready to go. Then April 1st became April 28th. And then the next major executive order was issued on April 23rd. And that was, and the order for us to provide distance learning for the remainder of the 1920 school year. Then executive order number 2029 came about. And that was on June 24th, 2020. And if you, if you waded through all of the executive order, what it was really doing was outlining how we could return to school in hybrid learning. And at that point in time, all of the planning and all the thinking was around opening school in a hybrid model. As we move forward, state metrics became a piece of the formula. On July 28th, and we had heard about this a week prior that this was likely going to occur, that there was going to be state metrics established. Those state metrics were established that stated that if in the previous seven days, and I'll just speak specifically to Clockmouth County, this varied some based on size of county around, around the state. But if we, we needed to have less than 30 cases per 100,000 people in Clockmouth County, so there's roughly 420,000 people in Clockmouth County. So that would mean that in a week's period of time, there would need to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 125 cases. And that was to reenter K through 5. If we were above that, then it was mandatory that we needed to be in comprehensive distance learning. For high schools, so middle schools and high schools, that number was different. It was much lower. The number was 10 per 100,000. According to state officials at the time, the evidence that they had of the virus in July is that the spread was not very significant amongst young children. Then on October 30th, new metrics came out. At that time, again, the wording changed, but in effect, they were mandatory if the numbers were above 100 per 100,000 over a 14-day period of time for K through 5. So if you looked at and just rolled that back and tried to put in the context of what the, what the metrics were previously, that would be like it went from 30 to 50 in a seven-day period of time. But the, the standard was 100 over a 14-day period of time. The 50 per 100,000 should have a footnote on the end of it because that's the sixth through 12th. So that raised from 10 to 25 if we were to do a comparative. But keep in mind that the vocabulary changed at that point and it became over 14 days instead of seven. On December 23rd, this came as a surprise to educators. We did not have any advance warning that this was going to occur. But the governor held an announcement and announced that the, the metrics were no longer mandatory, they were advisory. We didn't really know what advisory meant at that time because it was, this was done in a press release two days before Christmas. And there was very little information that came out at that time. On January 19th, so next week, we're expecting new guidelines and metrics from Oregon Department of Education. I was in a meeting yesterday with Department of Education officials. And at this point, that is not firm what that is going to be. And I'll talk a little bit more a little later on about what the challenges are going forward. The state guidelines. So in June, we received our first batch of state guidelines about how to conduct school when we were in this COVID environment. Those first guidelines were issued to us on June 10th. They were 47 pages long. Within the document is not only the 47 pages of the guidelines, but there are numerous links inside the document that takes you to other locations within the Oregon Department of Education with more guidance and more things to consider. On June 30th, you can see the version number changed. It became 1.5.8. It grew a little bit in size and there were more guidelines, more protocols, more safety procedures that were included within that document. On July 22nd, the next one appeared. And that's number 272, 69 pages long. July 29th, 3.1.0, 75 pages. August 11th, 3.7.4, 87 pages. I want you to keep in mind that every time one of these new guidelines comes into place, it's not just that they're adding more pages. There's actually information that's changing within the guidelines. And so for those of us that work in the business, it becomes very, very complicated to recall whether which exact version we are under as we approach the guidelines. But they're not done. On September 8th, version 3.7.8 came out. October 30th, version 4.0.0. December 4th, 4.1.0. December 31st, version 5.1.0. And next week, we should receive another version. We don't know what the numbering system will be at that time, but that will be our next version of the guidelines. And so again, this makes it very difficult to manage through all of this because this is constantly changing. It's a moving target. It's a constant moving target. The current metrics in Clockmouth County. So over the two-week period prior to December 28th, it actually runs from Sunday to Saturday. So the, the dates would have been December 14th, December 15th or 13th to December 26th were the actual dates of that first set of data. The data was 344 infections per 100,000 people in Clockmouth County. On January 4th, that dropped to 318. On January 11th, 348. It's likely that those numbers are going to continue to grow in the coming months or coming weeks. I want to talk a little bit about liability protection. A big issue for school districts is that we were notified in late June that our insurance policy no longer covered COVID-related liability. This, almost all of the school districts in Oregon purchased their insurance through the Oregon School Board Association. So we take advantage of large scale and be able to drive the best cost we can get for insurance. But this wasn't just in school districts. This is something that's happened across the insurance industry. On August 12th, we asked our insurance agent to come in and meet with you, the Board of Directors, to talk to you about what that meant. At that time, you, you heard what the implications were of not having liability insurance and operating schools outside of any of the guidelines that had been presented and what the possible consequence of that could be. On December 21st, in a special one-day session, the Oregon Legislature approved by very wide margins, liability protection for school districts as long as all the protocols and guidance was followed by a school district. So as long as, then we were protected with liability protection. On January 6th, the Oregon School Board Association issued a statement that they sought outside legal opinion as to whether we could view the metrics as advisory. And the conclusion of that and what we received last week is that liability protection would be in jeopardy if a school district were to view the metrics as advisory, then you would be operating outside of the guidelines that had been established. Yesterday, we were informed that there could possibly be a remedy to that problem. There was no detail of what that could be, just that there could possibly be a remedy to that problem. The vaccine. So we've all waited for the vaccine because we know that that's the path out. On December 11th, Pfizer's vaccine was approved by the FDA. I believe that on December 14th was when those vaccines, some vaccines in a, in a press conference was administered to several people from different parts of the state. On December 18th, the Moderna vaccine was approved by the FDA. On January 12th, so yesterday, Governor Brown, which was another surprise announcement, people I know that are really well-connected had no idea this was coming, stated that the COVID vaccine would be available for educators beginning on January 23rd, 21. So what, what happened is that the current administration in Washington DC decided to push out the remaining batches of vaccine sooner rather than later. There was a requirement that those aged 65-plus had to move into qualification of, classification of 1A, meaning that they were immediately acceptable to receive the vaccine. The, but it also stated that educators were now a priority and that our priority rank moved way up. Well, we had a week, a week ago, because of some of the networks that I'm involved with, with healthcare, the, I saw an opportunity that if and when the vaccine could ever be available, that we needed to be ready. We learned that the hospitals, not the local public health divisions, have all the vaccine. They received almost everything in the metro area. The local public health, it's just a pass-through to the local hospitals. We made contact with the hospital group. They were very excited about the opportunity and maybe work with superintendents to see if there would be a way to push things forward. That meeting occurred today, occurred about 5:30 this afternoon. And I will just tell you that there were nine school district superintendents represented in the room. And I will tell you that the news is very, very good coming out. It's not, we can't share what that news is yet. There's too much detail that has to be worked out, but the news is very, very good. So I'm very excited about that. I find it great to sit in on that meeting and be in the room to, I had no idea where this was going to go. But he had joined us at that time. So Greg, you might have a comment or two you want to make.
Sure. I just want to say, as a, I think first as a parent, because it's, this is hard. As a, as a teacher, it's also hard. But as, as a school board member for the board, it's, it's also been difficult. This is the first thing I've seen since this started where I feel that we have a clear path to a solution. And I, at 2:59 today, I did not have that. But, but I see it now and I think that something good is going to happen and I think it's coming sooner rather than later.
So I created these slides before that meeting. And so some of the things are, are very relevant, some are not. But the decisions you as a school board are going to need to make. The first is how the, how the metrics are going to factor into school opening. And we're going to have to carefully think through that. And what does that need to look like? The second is about the availability of the vaccine and how will that factor into school opening? That appears to be less of an issue now than it was three hours ago. Decisions to be made by the administration in collaboration with teachers, support staff, and parents. We still need to address all of the safety protocols. I counted the list today, or Natalie did for me. And we have a Gantt chart that we have developed that has all the protocols that need to be resolved. They've all been assigned to people within the school district to resolve those. The list is well over 100 items long and each of those items, most of them have subcategories with underneath each of those items. So this is, it's very comprehensive what has to be done. And, and, and we have to sort that out. One of the big things that we learned yesterday that we have no answer for right now is that part of the reopening will be that we need to have rapid testing available in the schools. And there was a lot of stuff about how many people had to be tested every week, which is basically everybody that enters the school building. And the, as you start to think about the complexity of trying to do that, it becomes pretty overwhelming, quite frankly. And so we're going to need a lot more guidance on what does that really mean and what does that really look like? We need to do a survey of parents, find out who wants to return. We have, I've heard from a number of parents who are hopeful that, that we will continue to provide comprehensive distance learning if the schools are open because they simply are not comfortable or there is someone within their immediate family that has, is at a higher risk. We need to reach agreements with our employee groups. You heard Jeremiah talk about taking tours and having our employees walk us around and from their eyes, what do they see and what needs to be focus areas? We need to determine what type of hybrid model we will operate. There's, there's choices within that. We need to determine what limited in-person instruction looks like and how soon we can start that. And we need to think about what grades would enter school and in what timetable would those, would those occur? So all that still needs to be worked out. The challenge is going forward. So the modeling that was shared with us yesterday, that's developed by the Oregon Health Sciences University, shows that the COVID virus and infections in Oregon are expected to surge in February and March, perhaps two or three times their current levels. So there could be a significant number of people that have the infection soon. Another significant challenge is the COVID variant that you may have read about in United Kingdom that has ravaged the United Kingdom with rapid growth in the number of infections has been found in multiple states in Oregon, in the US. As of yesterday, not in Oregon yet. But they believe that it's likely to arrive. And so how does that change all of the planning? No one knows yet. We would have to wait for guidance from the Oregon Health Authority. There's always the unknown. There could, who knows what's behind the next corner? We don't know. And we just need to be able to adapt and adjust when that occurs. And then the final factor is there is, there is fear related to the virus. There is fear about returning to school. There is fear of the unknown. And we have to be able to overcome that fear. And we have to be able to move forward in a positive way. And that's with our students, with our staff, with our parents. We need to overcome the fear. So those are the things in the comments that I would make at this time. Board, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. I wanted to give just a status report. If here's where we are, we're not making any proposals to you tonight. But it's just a status report of here's where we are and, and we will know more sometime next week. Keep in mind that when we receive guidance, it usually takes several days after the guidance comes out before we fully understand what everything means and says. There's, there's some, sometimes when you receive things from departments within government, you have to have some interpretation of what does that really mean? And so we'll have to wait for those interpreters to help us out with what does that really mean? So that's, that's my report for tonight. If you have questions and let me stop sharing this slideshow and get back to looking all of it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Hey Bob, could you speak a little more regarding the liability issue? I, from what I understood, we would incur liability if not only we didn't follow the governor's guidance, but I didn't hear you mention OSHA and EDU. And I'd like to have you speak a little to that. And also, could you put it in real-world terms? If we didn't follow the guidance, if we incurred liability, what would be the potential cost to the district? You know, if we had to defend ourselves in, say, a COVID-related lawsuit, that sort of it? What could be the consequences of that?
Sure, sure. So Eric, some of that is unknown, quite frankly. Would you, would you ask me, does that also mean OSHA? And does it also mean not only the guides from ODE, but any other state agencies that might have some oversight? I'm, I'm guessing the answer is yes to that, but I'm not positive that the answer is yes to that. And so we'll have to do a little digging to make sure that we're giving you the correct information. So lawsuits can be very, very expensive without losing the lawsuit. The lawsuit can be very The lawsuit can be very, very expensive just with the court costs and the cost for attorneys. You may remember that we were involved in a federal lawsuit a few years ago. And we were told at that time that a lawsuit that winds up in federal court, that you can expect to spend a quarter million dollars to defend. In state courts, it would be something less than that, but it would still be very expensive. None of that would be covered by insurance. All that would be covered by the district, out of district funds. So that's, that's even before you get to a judgment. That's just the cost for defending ourselves.
Bob, can you hear me with the mask on?
Yeah.
Sorry, Steve and I both, we just both got tested negative for COVID, but we're still masking here. Vaccines, I, I, first of all, for everybody who's listening, I have a thousand questions, but it sounds like we have new information that's coming up. So by not asking questions, I don't want that to seem like I don't have a million pages of questions. Vaccine costs to get the, the teachers vaccinated, the staff vaccinated, does that come out of the, the employees' insurance? Does it come from the state? Um, at some point, will students, and I apologize if I missed this, will students be required also to be vaccinated to come in? Have you heard that? And if so, where are those costs coming from?
So the, the cost for staff vaccinations, actually the cost for all the vaccinations, it doesn't matter who's getting the vaccinations through this process right now. That is paid for by the government. And I don't know whether that's the federal government or the state government. My, my hunch is that's the federal government that is covering the cost of all vaccinations. So there would be no cost. For students, there are, they have not started testing a vaccine for students and for children. So for anybody 16 years of age and younger, it's going to be a while before there's any vaccine for kids. And by a while, I mean quite a long while, because this testing process takes time.
Yeah, I regret we didn't explore the opportunity of asking questions of the teacher union when, when they made their statement. So I don't know if it's possible to bring them back on or if they'd be interested. It sounded like what I was hearing is unanimous, that the teachers do not want to go back to school. I did not hear a caveat of vaccine, vaccines being part of that, any definitive statement around that. I know that on your, your display there, you put staff as part of initiative and talked about going to the schools and getting their concerns about the, the buildings themselves. But I think that we, that we can't de-emphasize that that's a major factor.
Eric, I did take note that, that during their speaking in their resolution, the statement was to continue in CDL until a vaccine to each employee. So they did make that statement.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, one of the things I'll add to that while I'm unuted and talking is, you know, we've heard, like Bob said, he's received lots of email, our board has as well, which I appreciate hearing from our community. I appreciate also that we've received numerous, numerous emails from students and hearing their voice has been fantastic. Students are, are expressing concern about them being vaccinated, concerned over spreading to their families. And so that's something that I'm not aware of, Bob, and I wondered what you already knew about. I know they say young children are less likely to be transmitters, but our older students are, are more likely. I think that's why the metrics are the way they are. But do you have any more you could speak to us about?
Yeah, there's.
Even if we get teachers vaccinated, our students could be spread, taken at home.
Yeah, there will actually be, I, I will provide a link later on to the Harvard study. The Harvard study is the, the one that is being used nationally as a, as a, setting the standard for what they have learned after researching around the world and in the United States as to how COVID spreads. And the basic conclusion of that is that COVID, if the protocols are used, if the protocols are used and you follow the safety protocols, the likelihood of transmission is low. And the likelihood of transmission with young children is even lower. Now, the wild card Stacy is we really don't know much about the variant. And so that is yet to be, to be thought about, yet to be viewed. The, the good thing about the vaccine is it does cover the variant. And so, so there is evidence that the, the vaccine does work on the variant.
Bob, with the information that you got today, is any kind of an estimate on when you're able to provide us with further information on the outcome?
Within two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was going to be my question too. Like I said, I know we have a lot of parents on here and, and as a parent and an educator also, like a lot of people here. Thank you for getting the information out. And thank you to the parents. If I don't say it later, all the parents have sent in emails. I've taken notes of every email that has come our way. I've written down your name and what your thoughts were. And students also. It's helpful and this is very, very difficult and just, well, it's, this is, it's, I've said it before. It's like, it's like drilling a hole in a bucket when you don't have enough plugs.
Yeah, I just, I encourage people as well to continue to write us. I'm responding to every email I get. It's very 50/50, so it's a lot of information. A lot of people are writing with a lot of emotion. But it's so valuable that we get all the thoughts of the community to be able to make an informed decision. So I really encourage you to encourage everyone around you to continue to reach out to us, let us know your thoughts.
Sorry, not just. Follow-up question about that, like stat, or community having that opportunity for input. You talked about needing to get a, a survey out to families. Do you have a timeline or estimate of when you think that, that might come? I know things change day to day. So what we think we're doing in a week pivots on us really quickly. But just right now, what, what do you think is the, when could a community really expect to hear or see something where they can give some feedback?
I need, I need, Stacy, I need to see the guidelines next week.
Yeah.
We don't, we, we do not know what they're going to say. And, and, and in fact, I don't believe the Department of Education people know what they're going to say because the Oregon Health Authority is still weighing very heavily the projected surge for February, March. And they're also weighing very heavily is the variant in Oregon. And so I, I think there's just a lot of unknown. I think that we, what we have learned through this process is things will change. That's what we've learned. And how many times they change and to what extent, I don't know. But what I've tried to do consistently with this is to not put people and make, make them feel like they're on a yo-yo, where one day we're doing one thing and the next day we're doing something else. We're trying to stay the course with what we do.
I really concur with that, Bob. We don't want to throw the kids in school and pull them right back out. I've seen that around the country and the psychological impact of that, it can be great, let alone on the staffing. Could you speak a little to, with the current guidelines, not the potential upcoming ones? What would a day in the life of an elementary school student look like? I've heard everything from if we follow the guidelines, there's either eating lunch at their desk, there's no recess, they're wearing masks, they're six feet apart. Can you talk a little bit about some of those factors?
Yeah, I, I can, Eric. It's, so first of all, we have not settled on what model that will be. We still have work to do to decide which model. It's really don't have that much work. We just have to decide, are we going to go with a, a model that's what I'll call an AB model? Where elementary school kids would attend, some, some would attend in the morning and others were attended in the afternoon so that virtually every child would be in school for a short period of time every day. And that would probably be something like a couple hours. And it would probably focus on core academic skills during that time. And there, there would be, it's required that we have 35 square feet of space per individual in a classroom and we need to have six feet of separation. So if you were to think about a typical classroom, what you would see is instead of desks or tables and chairs that are bunched together, there would be a desk and six feet later, there would be another desk. And six feet later, there would be another desk. And so it, I, I've seen classrooms set up like that. Quite frankly, it'd look a little desolate when it, when it's in that configuration. The, there, there would be limited opportunity for any form of recess because we have to maintain social distancing. I have no idea how the testing protocol will work. I have no idea. And that, that's the COVID testing protocol. We still have to work through that. And there, we would have separation. The other day I was at the elementary school and I was kind of curious that if we had a dozen kids in a classroom and we were moving from one space in the school to the other and we maintain six feet of distance between each child, where's the beginning of that line and where's the end of that line? And basically it crosses three classrooms is how long that line is with just a dozen kids. And so there's, there's a, this will not be typical school, as we all know typical school. But it will also be school in person with a teacher that can lead the child in their learning. And it's very essential and critical.
So Bob, going back really quick, and I know you said things changed today. The letter from the governor in December talked about that February 15th date, and we had discussed less than 100 cases per 10,000? 100,000?
100,000.
100,000, thank you. For two weeks before reopening. Is that, did that, I don't know if you can say or not, that matrix is kind of what the public had in December. So is that still kind of part of the guideline or is that switched as well with the new information that has come out? Or can you even let us know that?
Well, it, there, there will be a change in the, in the metrics. We don't know to what. If it's the Washington or the, the Harvard University study, then you can expect the metrics to look something similar to what the state of Washington just adopted. But as I said, the, the information is changing so fast on the rate of infection and the variant that I don't, I do not believe, I, I believe they, they know where they want to go. I don't believe they know that they can go there.
Are we ready to move on to action items?
Thanks for being here, to any audience.
Um, first up, approval of the 2122 local service plan from the ESD.
A motion to approve?
I'll second the motion.
It's motioned and seconded, any discussion?
I think I just want to throw out a compliment to our ESD and the services and the work that they provide. I continually hear about the great work they're doing. And so just want to add that I'm, I'm so appreciative of, for our district, the, the resources and the support that we have. So thank you to the, the ESD for that and all the people that provide that.
I have to concur because we, we do depend greatly on technology as well as, I mean, down to our, our nurses, for instance. And a lot of people don't know that a lot of those, those vital support systems come from ESD. So it's very appreciated.
Natalie?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Tracy?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And next item, approve minutes.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, Natalie, thank you.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, approve administrator election. And this is Rachel, joining us.
I'll motion to approve.
Second that.
That's been motioned and seconded, any discussion?
I just want to say welcome, Rachel.
Yeah, and a big, we are very lucky to get you in such short amount of time, this turnaround. I know I told you in person, but it was weighing on my heart that we had to make this transition at this time for this position. And we're very fortunate that we get a vote on appointing you tonight.
I'll concur with that and just, I got to say hi to Rachel on Monday night, but just say really looking forward to working to, working with you and getting to know you and hopefully someday seeing you in person.
Thank you. Natalie, thank you.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
And Jay?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is we need to approve the change in account authorized signers. And for people watching, we have changed our director of finance. And so as you can imagine, that those, that Rachel needs to be authorized to make signatures and conduct transactions.
Motion to approve account signature change.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Right, if there's no discussion, Natalie, thank you.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
You. Next item, appoint a clerk and deputy clerks, appoint superintendent as custodian of funds, authorize facsimile of signature and set borrowing limit. And if someone refreshed my memory, this is something that we, we do every year. But if someone was, you know, observing this for the first time, maybe Bob, what's the, what's the, what's the rundown?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, so this, this is something that we do every year. And.
And we're doing it mid-year this year because of the changeover.
Yeah, okay. So again, if you're watching around the timing of what we're doing, we normally do it. Is it earlier in the year or is it?
Usually, I believe it's our July board meeting. Okay. Usually handle all this and.
Okay.
And we will handle it again in July. This is just to update us with change in personnel.
Right, oh, okay. Thank you very much.
I'm going to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's. Thank you, it's moved and seconded, any discussion?
Hey Bob, is the short term borrowing amount, the five hundred thousand, is that the same as before? Is that, or is that changing? Here, I'm you.
Rachel, I don't have the answer to that question, do you?
I suspect Natalie is probably the best one to.
We'll bring it back to you at the next forum meeting. How's that?
Thank you.
All right, so we're, we're moving on from that one, correct? And going to item F? I think that is correct. So we're bringing back item E next time. So we need
Is that, I guess the question is back at you. Is that, is that what you want to do? Or Eric, you just want the question answered?
I would like to know, it says that we're limiting it to five hundred thousand, but it does not anywhere in the documentation say we're raising that or lowering it.
It would spend five hundred thousand, that's the same.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded. So Natalie, please.
Sorry, did you say Eric?
Yes, I'm sorry, Eric.
Oh, yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, appoint a budget officer. And again, this is continuing to make things right with Rachel, her new hire.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Items motioned and seconded, any discussion? If there's no discussion, Natalie, thank you. Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G, appoint investor of funds. On the same. On the same.
I'll motion to approve.
A second there.
It's motioned and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yeah.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Item H, approve twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two inter-district transfer for non-resident students.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Natalie, thank you.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Item I, we need to approve the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget committee members. You note the changes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
And that's, that's mine. Tim Rather was my budget member for three years and I thank him profusely for volunteering his time. And would like to thank Donna Diggs for stepping up and becoming my new budget member. Also a valuable educator and wonderful person, and I think her forgiving her time.
And is the other change, just to be clear, that the position one is now vacant and it was filled before, is that correct?
That's correct.
My, that was, that's for me, and Ann Tangersley moved out of Gladstone, and so she had to relinquish that, that position. So I'm working to get a fulfillment, bring that to you guys.
Thank you. Natalie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And our last action item is, has, was added, approve request for unpaid, unpaid leave of absence. And did, did you all get that? I think so. All right.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, any discussion? Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next part of our agenda is public participation. And I've got five, I believe it is five letters to read. I'm gonna do my best to read them in the order that I got them. And forgive me while I get my timer going. So it's, it's on the back of our agenda, but the, I'll read it for three minutes until we run out of time. If I'm flubbing my reading, I'll add a little bit at the end because I want to make sure I honor the, the voice of the people that shared their comments. But also if, if it's going quite a bit longer than I can do, I'll, I'll have to abbreviate it. The following public comment comes from Glenda Share. According to the website, the Gladstone Teaching Protocol quote, "provides direct service to Gladstone children ages three through five, including children who qualify for special education through Clackamas Education Service District and children who qualify for Head Start," end quote. "All research points to the extreme importance of early intervention for children with disabilities and developmental delays. There is a window of opportunity for those young learners. Some young learners have aged out of early intervention and have not received FAPE. Question, how can the Gladstone School District and Clackamas ESD justify that a virtual, excuse me, how can they justify that a virtual preschool is developmentally appropriate for young children? As an, I need to read that again, forgive me. How can they justify that a virtual preschool is developmentally appropriate for young children as an intervention, especially for children with a communication disorder, autism, or global developmental delay? If a person has a medical condition that could stabilize or improve with treatment, he or she would still be able to receive treatment even during a pandemic. It is inhumane to deny young children the appropriate service they need. What is the timeline for opening? Please note, this is the tenth month of schools being closed." Glenda, the board thanks you for your input. The following public comment comes from Adrian and Heather Smith. Dear Mr. Stewart, Mr. Patterson and Board Members, as parents of two children in the Gladstone School District, we feel the number one priority should be the health and safety of students and staff. Listed below are some of the concerns we would like to share with all of you. If students are exposed and become ill, we lose an opportunity to educate them. At this time, a more communicable variant mutation of the virus is present and spreading. Not enough studies on long-term effects. This virus is relatively new and no ability to study. Students should not be used as guinea pigs. Vocal parent complaints should not be the driving force behind policy. For the safety of staff and students, we should wait. We are on the cusp of new leadership and resources that take science into account. This will give us honest answers based on facts. We have to get over the hump of this dark period. Soon we will have more vaccines available and more people vaccinated. Our numbers and rates of infection are the highest they have ever been. Why on earth would we open up now when it isn't safe in the spring? And when it wasn't safe in the spring and fall? Let's not bend to political pressure and follow the science instead. Thank you for your time and we appreciate having the opportunity to share our thoughts, Adrian and Heather Smith. Adrian and Heather, the board thanks you for your input. The following public comment comes from Scotty Shaner. Hello, district staff and school board members. First, I just want to say that I am a Gladstone parent who's very happy with all that you have done to keep our students and staff safe while learning remotely. And with all that the teachers have done to go above and beyond what was expected, we're especially appreciative of choir and drama in this household. I know it has not been easy and I know that there are others that are very unhappy. But this mom is very impressed and my student is doing just fine. She hates not going to school, but she gets why she has to do her schooling like this right now and is looking forward to going back when it's safe. Second, I know you have a lot to read, so I'm going to keep it short and direct on what I'm advocating for. No in-person schooling after all, let me start that point again, no in-person schooling until all staff and hopefully most of the students can get both shots of the vaccine. No in-person schooling until all meetings like school board and city council meetings are done in person. If one is safe, then the other is safe, right? Please consider when making decisions what most of the district is asking for. Maybe another survey would be handy, maybe one just for the students too. Please continue to pay attention to the data. I know it changes every day, but from what I can tell, our county has way too many daily cases to make opening acceptable. I don't care what the governor says. Please consider an option for students that are either vulnerable themselves or live with vulnerable family members to choose to continue CDL when school opens without having to transfer to a different system with different teachers and classmates. I know there would be a lot of logistics involved in this, but it is also important. And it will make it a lot easier to transition when those families are able to get the vaccine. FYI, my husband is a cancer survivor with an autoimmune disease that affects his lungs, so this is very personal to me. Reports of suicide, suicide attempts, mental health issues are flying around, but none seem to have any real numbers. I encourage you to look closer into this and come up with a plan to address these issues. I feel like families put way too much pressure on schools and are using this as an excuse to open schools prematurely. But this can be figured out while continuing remote learning, possibly with some very limited in-person assistance. I feel for these families, I really do, but I also have enough experience with mental illness to know that there is a lot of help outside of the schools. Lastly, a personal statement, I see a lot of people advocating for opening that have not been affected by this pandemic personally in any way. I don't mean job loss or anything like that. I mean, they haven't lost anyone or been made to deal with any long-term effects of the virus. And I am happy for them, but this also makes me so angry, really. Where's the empathy? I've lost two colleagues, have friends who have lost grandparents, parents, spouses. Know many that have had mild cases and yet still have long-term effects. One, a fourteen-year-old who now needs a kidney transplant. This does affect kids. And I know many who work in the healthcare industry that are horrified by people's general lack of caring about other people. Scotty, I, I apologize and I apologize to all of you. I was trying to tap my timer. And I think I've gone over time. I did practice reading all these and try to time them. And at a respect, I, I will make sure all of the board members have a, have a copy of this. I want this to be heard, but I also want to honor the, the rules that the board set forward. So Scotty, the board thanks you for your input. Thank you. The following public comment comes from Ginger and Mark Zimtbaum. Thank you to our school district. Thank you to our district leaders, our school board and our school staff for their tireless efforts in providing our students with a high-quality CDL education. Your work is greatly appreciated and respected. As you move forward in making your plans to reopen our schools to in-person learning, we ask you to please prioritize the health and safety of our greater Gladstone community, most of whom will not yet be vaccinated. Our students will also not be vaccinated and the families of staff will not be vaccinated. The notion that COVID only negatively affects the older population or high-risk individuals and is therefore safe for kids to return to schools is wrong. According to data currently posted on the CDC site since April, about fifty percent of hospitalized COVID patients have been under the age of sixty-five, with close to thirty percent being between the ages of eighteen to forty-nine. And most of that group did not have any underlying medical conditions. While students aged five to seventeen may have fewer complications than adults, they can still have serious complications. They absolutely carry the virus in high concentration and they very effectively transmit the, the virus, especially in the twelve to eighteen-year-old group. She provides a link to the CDC website. We personally believe it would be a completely irresponsible plan for any students to return to in-person learning amid the local surge in cases and with two new, more transmittable strains now circulating. We do not trust the judgment of students to follow safety guidelines. We see groups of children and teens out every day in Gladstone, always without masks or social distancing. There is no way we're okay with our kids being closed in a classroom for several hours a day with kids we know aren't being safe when out of school. In our experience with GHS athletic cohorts, we pulled our daughter from her cohort after a number of students repeatedly thwarted the mask and distance rules despite the diligent efforts of coaches to enforce the rules. The coaches were totally on top of things. This was not the coach's fault and they always occurred when their backs returned. We know schoolmates and other local families who have tested positive for COVID recently. And, sorry, they were socializing with peers in the days before, testing positive, exposing others in the community. They thought they were fine. I understand not all families feel the way we do and you are under great pressure to reopen in-person ASAP. Therefore, I offer this reopening idea for your consideration. Since the K-five group of students is the most academically vulnerable and least served through CDL, focus your in-person measures on them and keep grades six, twelve on CDL for the remainder of the school year, unless there's a dramatic decline in the cases later this spring. Spreading grades K-five out throughout the district's four schools would maximize your ability to maintain proper social distancing and better limit cohort interactions. It would also better protect the community by limiting the exposure of a large number of students. We advocate for keeping grades six, twelve on CDL the rest of the school year, maintaining their access to teacher-led instruction five days a week instead of only two on hybrid. We feel five days of teacher-led instruction is vital for their more in-depth subject matter. This age group seems to be more susceptible to COVID complications. University studies have proven them to be virtual super spreaders and this group needs less parental academic instruction in general than the K-five group. I have gone a little, about ten seconds over time to finish that paragraph. Again, I, Ginger and Mark, I'm sorry. I will make sure that the board receives this copy so they can take all of your thoughts into consideration. Ginger and Mark, the board thanks you for your input. This is my, the final one that is being shared tonight. The following public comment comes from Ryan and Aleah Binkowski Burke. Dear School Board Members and Administration, we are writing today to implore you to resume in-school instruction as soon as possible. Our boys attend John Whitten Elementary and the struggles with this learning format are frustrating and heartbreaking. Our third graders barely learning anything new and Zoom school, and Zoom school for our first grader is, at best, practically useless and at worst, completely traumatizing. This statement is not meant to criticize the teachers or educators involved in any way. Our boys' teachers are sending emails day and night, weekdays and weekends. They are spending sleepless nights trying to figure out content to engage little kids via a tiny screen. They are developing content, making recordings and reviewing seesaw work for, at all hours for what amounts to about an hour of live instruction for the first grader and less than an hour for the third grader. They are putting in all this work, yet educating and less than an hour for the third grader. They are putting in all this work, yet education is suffering. The fun and all the good things about school have been robbed from them. Our first grader views Zoom school as a glorified TV show. He doesn't want to engage and when he finally puts his hand up to participate, half the time the teacher doesn't see because watching 20 little two-inch squares is impossible. We ask him about his class's friends and he says, they aren't my friends. I've never seen them. All right, forgive me. They aren't my friends. I've never met them. The teacher doesn't see when he is sitting there in tears because Zoom school is boring. Last week, he was in tears for three hours because he didn't want to do an assignment that took him six minutes once he sat down to do it. This isn't working. We both work fairly stressful jobs and trying to play a teacher while fielding work calls is futile. This isn't working. We don't want to put teachers in danger. We want them vaccinated and our kids back in school. We want our boys to get the educational, social and emotional development they have been missing for the last nine months. We understand cases are high right now, but honestly, if we wait until things are sort of normal, the kids won't be back to school until September. The idea that we will have a second grader who hasn't had the idea that we will have a second grader who hasn't had normal, comprehensive education since two-thirds of the way through his kindergarten year is completely unacceptable. As a family, we would be willing to do whatever it takes to get our boys back in school. Yes, we understand this puts us at a higher risk as well and that even socially distanced visits with grandparents will have to stop. We would be willing to sign a waiver or release of liability stating we will not hold the school liable. We want to know the steps you are taking to keep staff and students safe and we want a plan to resume in-person learning as soon as possible. Other states and countries have been able to open school with little to no increase in local community spread. Let's learn from the success stories and resume the quality of education Gladstone is known for. Thank you. Ryan and Aleah Binkowski Burke. Ryan and Aleah, the board thanks you for your input. That is all of the letters that I received for the purpose of sharing publicly. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
For the sake of time, Greg, I'm going to go through these really fast unless the board wants it to slow down. The financial report would normally be given to you by Rachel or Samantha. So this is actually Samantha's financial report. So I'm not going to ask Rachel to give that to you. If you have questions regarding the financial report, please send us a note and we will answer those questions. By next month, Rachel will have put her own touch to it and the financial report will look different than it does now. So I just want you to be aware of that. Personal report, Tammy or Jeremiah, I'm not sure who that is.
There's just, there's just one quick note. The job title for Savannah, our new hire, is listed incorrectly. She is an instructional assistant pre-kindergarten, pre-kindergarten in the Gladstone teaching preschool.
Great, thanks Jeremiah. Natalie, you have something right now. What week is this?
It's for appreciation. Yes, I wanted to thank you on behalf of the district and the community for all that you do. Even though we make a special effort in January to recognize you, we appreciate you all here and your contributions are year-round. So thank you. This year more than ever, I think you guys have contributed to the community and the school. To celebrate all that you do, we have a little swag delivered to you today and I just wanted people to know that your gift bags included a Gladiator car flag, a Bulldog t-shirt, and We Can Do Hard Things journal and a little leopard lanyard from GCCF. So on behalf of the district and the community, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for always putting students first and thank you for all you do.
That was so fun to get today, Natalie. Thank you so much. Loved it. I love that it represents something from each school. I think that's really special.
And there was chocolates in there too, so those are great.
I think I have a porch pirate at my house.
There are no more chocolates.
Yeah, mine are gone. Sorry.
That was first. Thank you though Natalie. It was Ally brought it in and she goes, this is on the front porch for you. And I was like, what? And it was like surprise, surprise, surprise. It just, it totally made my day. It was been a long 10 months. Made my day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. I agree, board to work with. The 2122 calendar committee, it's just, this is just a placeholder for today and let you know what's happening. Quite frankly, we need some time. We're not ready to jump onto developing the calendar for next year. 2122 student options. We have an agreement that was reached with Oregon City School District in the mid-'90s. It allows some transfer of students across district boundaries. This was, if any of you really want the history to it, I can certainly give that to you. But it's, it's a long story, but I will just tell you that that it's worked. We did put it on hold when student, when school choice was available to us. So each year, the superintendent of Oregon City School District and I would just say, let's just hold this in abeyance for one year and see what happens next year. And then when, when school choice went away, then our open enrollment went away, then we've reactivated this, this student options plan. So that's what this is here for. The actual options plan, the document is in the, in the board packet, so you could read it to get any information that you might want to have. Any questions on that before I move off of it? Okay. Jeremiah, school board policies?
I have for you today, a raft of school board policies. Section J for first read. So with first read, I certainly would take any questions now, but also welcome you to review them. And you've got the dirty copies, so the, the copy that reflects all the additions and old language. It would certainly welcome any comments by policy review committee members and/or other directors. And certainly anything in writing in between meetings as well.
Thanks Jeremiah. I'm not going to give you a legislative update right now. The legislature does go in session another week. We did have a forum that was held at Clackamas ESD today through the Zoom links. We had seven legislators attend that and we had designated speakers ready to go. The highlight to me is that the last three teachers of the year from Clackamas County were in attendance. And they each did a presentation. And the presentations were phenomenally good. They talked about what they saw as the challenges, what they saw as the opportunities. You could just, they oozed love for the job. And they really had a clear, articulate message for our legislators. It was, it was very, very good. But following them, three superintendents, Catherine Ludwig from Westland, Ryan Carpenter from Estacada and Matt Utterback from North Clackamas presented the legislature with our legislative suggestions for them that primarily focused around we need to have a continuing service level of funding. And we need to keep the Student Success Act funds separate from and in addition to that continuing service level. I will just tell you, the legislators couldn't help but to have been impressed. It was, it was well done, very, very well done. That's all I have.
Okay. Now is the time then for presentations and suggestions from board members. If you don't mind, I'm going to go clockwise from my top corner. So the first victim is Tracy and then Steve and then Stacy and then Jeremy and then Jay and Eric. Tracy?
Okay, um, I guess, well, one of them was to say thank you again for the, really appreciate the swag bag today. I attended the ASB induction. Ally was inducted in that and Ashley Browning did a just remarkable job of making that a really, really special and personalized event, although I think Ally was mortified because my mother kept putting her face in the camera because she didn't know what the camera was and then was waving to everybody. So I apologize for my mother during the ASB. Also, and I said it once, I'm going to say it again, to parents who are still on, for those of you who wrote letters, thank you so very much. I mean, the letters, I have two pages of notes from every, from every parent that I received a letter from. And the students who've written letters just expressing your concerns, thoughts, anxieties, how your year is going. It's so beneficial to hear how you're doing. It's important. And I just encourage you to use your voices because we are here to listen to you and, and just you know, you're the reason why we're here. Your kids are the reason why we're here. And so thank you for sending the letters. They, they are valuable and I encourage you to just reach out when you feel like you need to reach out. Thank you.
Stacy?
Steve's next.
Yeah, he's.
Oh, he passed. Okay. I also, if there's other parents still on, you saw that or community members, that we have some budget committee opening. So if that's something that you are interested in getting involved in, you can reach out to a board member that has those positions. And so I just wanted to make a little plug there because we'd love to fill our, our budget committee positions. And if you have any interest in, in sitting where we sit, then that's a great way to get started is on that budget committee. I have to say, you know, I love having our student representative come and I was really struck tonight by how much work, how, how much deep, important work our high school students are still doing, even though they're not in person. They're just continuing such great topics and work and support for their school community. So I just wanted to give a shout out goose to them. I also, I know I did it at last meeting, but Mr. Weir and, and Mr. Arnold, shout out to them, what they're accomplishing also. I know they're just putting in hundreds of hours of work to put together a virtual concert. And if you didn't get a chance to listen, I know Tracy sent it out as well to the board, but community, if you didn't listen to the, to the band concert, the band members play, it's just phenomenal. And I, my son's in there. I have to do a little shout out. I'm pretty proud of them, but just, you know, I can't believe what they've pulled off virtually. So thank you to them. And I'm looking forward to the next play. So it's exciting to hear they're still doing that. Yeah, I think that's it. And again, thanks again to Natalie. Thanks again for the appreciation. That was fantastic. So yeah, that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
I have a correction. I said ASB. I meant National Honor Society. So which makes me feel even more proud. I mean, I'm proud anyway. It was National Honor Society, not ASB that Ashley Browning put on.
Yeah, Jeremy?
Okay, I'm next. Thank you for the gift. Thanks for the input. I wish I could see the breadth of everybody who was participating tonight. I know there's limitation on this, but definitely recognize the, the strong care in our community for students and for, for everybody. So I appreciate that.
I guess I'm up here, Greg. Yes, I want to reiterate, thank you so much for the gift. It was, it was very nice as I was looking through it. It didn't occur to me until quite a bit after that. It was something from each school. So as I was going through that, it just didn't click for me until about, it was a couple of minutes, right? And I'm like, oh, I can't, it's every building. But that was very nice. Actually, that was a very nice touch. And I just, it was just nice to have that, you know? But I do want to mention one thing, as I listen to kind of what Stacy's saying, just it is a reminder that the students in our district are still very active. Yes, they're learning from home, but, but that has not stopped them from doing many things, right? And we've had a lot of creative solutions from the, the teaching staff. And it is a still a very active student body. So though we're literally not open, we are open for business. This district is, and you can see it around if you're looking for it. Some of it just goes behind the scenes and it's, it's relevant to the, the kids that are there. But really, nobody knows about it, right? But then every once in a while you get a glimpse of something and you say, this is a very active district still. So many tough decisions ahead for us, but it is happening and we are educating children now, right now. And they are getting a pretty good, you know, as, as best we can provide for them, but they're making their own opportunities too. And you're seeing that, you're seeing that stuff happening. So I applaud the kids for making the best of the situation. We can see as we talk about metrics and all kinds of things, you know, there's a direction that this is going. And I won't go there right now, but, but these kids are making the best of it. And I applaud them for that, you know? I have two daughters and they're doing the same thing. They're just doing, making the best of it. And, and, and it's a, and I think kids are very resilient in that sense. So anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, I'm assuming I'm going now. So I want to echo what Stacy brought up. I see it looks like Josh Weir has already dropped, but if you folks could pass on to him that work with him, that winter virtual concert was amazing. I'm not an emotional guy by any stretch of the imagination, unless I see, unless I see an old man cry, then I'm done. But that was, got me emotional. That Jazz High School group in particular was phenomenal. So I mean, yeah, I can't say enough. So like Jay said, it's amazing to see what's being accomplished virtually, you know, with these kids and, and by these leaders. So just wanted to echo that. Also, I appreciate the letters. I appreciate especially the letters that I got from the high school students. The tone, the, their feeling about it. I love that the letters that we've been receiving as of late have been passionate without being abrasive, rude, demanding. They've been very carefully worded about people's feelings and with an understanding there that other people are going to feel differently. So I've been very surprised by that. There's always going to be outliers, people that are going to be demeaning this society, that's the social, social network ways that we all experience. But for the most part, I think it's just been very, very good that we get to hear the feedback and then we get a form of opinion based on community needs. I think that's about it. Other than to say, I think it's important for people to know that all the talk today, Bob's information that he provided us. We're not just sitting on that and going to wait another month. We are meeting. We are going to be discussing this. We're going to be meeting with the teachers. There is a plan in place to proceed with the discussion. And Bob, I'm sure will be providing much communication to the, to the, both the teachers, to the community and to us as we go through this process this month. That's it for me.
Thanks. I just echo the same things. Thank you for the, the letters and the commentary that comes in. I want to acknowledge it could, or could nothing, it probably feels frustrating like those letters go off and disappear somewhere. I feel that some people are asking for an answer and I hope if you watched and listened today, you understand that we're still deep in the process of gathering information and try to be on top of these ever-changing metrics. And we're very committed, teachers, administrators, board members and, and you in the community. We're all very communicated, committed to, to getting kids back in schools, but doing this in, in the best way possible that Gladstone can do this. And then again, I just want to end with, I was grateful that I was able to participate in that meeting today because coming back to where we started, this is the first glimmer of hope. Not just hope, I, I feel like I see the path. The, the vision is clear. There are details to work out about how we get there, but I know how we're going to get there and yeah, that we're, it's, it's, we're getting there. Anyway, thank you. Anyway, thank you. If that's everything, I do have a procedural question. So typically at this point, I want to close the meeting. However, we will go into an executive session. And some of you may or may not know, I am, I'm no longer brand new at this, but I don't have a whole lot of experience about this transition part. So I'm inclined to end the meeting and then I will start. Okay, thank you. Then this meeting is adjourned.
So Greg, let me just, let me just.
That was one, one tap.
With an audience, the board will be entering into executive session under the ORS as that applied. And that, because of this, the nature of this, that would normally be done in a, in a room where you bang the gavel, the meeting would end, the room would clear and then you would restart the meeting. So, but the way this will work is that we will shut down the room because you will not be returning into open session. We will shut down the room and you'll enter into, into an executive session.
Yeah. Thanks. And that was the part I didn't know. Do I need to cite the ORS before I bang the gavel or after?
In the next gavel, you cite it. But just to let the audience know, this is happening now.
Yeah. All right. Thank, thank you. So this, this meeting is adjourned and then I'll start the, the next. Okay, so.
We actually have to transfer, we have to sign out and we go to a completely different meeting now.
Okay.
We'll have a link. You can email or text me if you can't get in.
Okay.